Order. So we start with the pledge.
Let me introduce to the flag of the United States of America and through the Republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start off with the approval of minutes for the approval of minutes for the public session from August 22nd.
I made the last one to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Approval of minutes for the August 22nd non-public session.
So.
Andy got it.
Second.
Second.
Okay, so any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Alrighty then. We'll move on to reports of administrators, superintendent's.
Alright, so I sent you my report and but just sort of the highlights of it, I guess, was that I thought the start of the year has been very good. It does feel more like normal, which I'm very happy about. We had a very good opening day with staff. I thought that the trainings we provided were beneficial and enjoyable to the staff. Unless you want to speak. We have, we still have several positions open, as I mentioned. Not so many in the teaching area, although there are some, but still quite a few in paraeducators. And we're always looking for substitutes, so. And then there are some stipended ones. A reminder that we have the Coming to the Mountain first event, which is going to be a film. People much wiser than myself have been weighing in on the appropriate movies to show. And also, we're trying to arrange an upcoming training session or a number of them actually on Section 504. And so we're setting that up. We're just picking a date. We're going to have our counselors and our nurses and our admin participate in that. We, one of the things that I need to do is set up a small title for a stakeholder group. Title for a is one of the grants we receive. We receive approximately $45,000, which sounds like a lot, but it's not in the grant world, but they have a lot of hoops to go through. And one of the hoops is you have to have a stakeholder group to determine priorities. So if there's a board member that's interested or a community member, that's great, let me know. Hoping to have a meeting in the next month or two. Really, it's probably a fairly light lift. Maybe one, maybe two meetings tops. Some of the legislation, nothing real specific has been coming out because the legislature hasn't been meeting. But I do want to just remind people that SB 410, which was the public comments at meetings, we're bringing that up to the policy committee at our meeting, which I think is in a week or two.
Right before the next.
Right before the next school board meeting. It shows up on my calendar. I go, it's all good. And then there's also this very interesting rule that came out, which was RSA 159E, which prohibited the enforcement of federal gun laws. And it brought up all these questions about how that impacts schools because we are safe, under the Safe Schools Gun Free Zone Acts. And so we're just waiting, we're waiting for the New Hampshire Attorney General to sort of weigh in officially. He's weighed in unofficially, to my knowledge, saying, well, you can still call the police, the police still can enforce things. But I know that has stressed out some folks a little bit. And then a couple of things that are not on your thing, but that I will mention because they just came up. We submitted those 33 grants for school safety. And they, in the first round, so there's two rounds. In the first round, they approved two out of the 33, and they were both at North Walpole School for surveillance and I think an alert system were the two. Hopefully we'll get more. I don't know why they approved that one out of all the others because it was the exact same application. But, you know, at least we got one and it's like $75,000 or something like that. And then the other thing that I'll say is I spent the morning, for the first time ever actually, at the New Hampshire Interscholastic Athletic Association, also known as NHIAA, meeting this morning because Paul Mountain won the Division III Sportsmanship Award, which I guess we do periodically, which is a huge thing because it's talking to people beside me, it's very hard to get. And it's their most prestigious award that they give out to schools. So kudos to everyone that was involved in that last year. I kind of expect it this year. So if you're on a sports team or know anyone, let's work on that. And that is my superintendent's report. Oh, I did want to say, because I noticed there are two people, and when I checked with the one, he's not a new principal, so I assume that they are students. And that they are probably here to give a student report, which is not on my list. So I was going to yield my time, if I'm a parliamentarian, to the two students so that they could give their report.
Sure. So obviously, school just started, so we don't have much to report on yet. But Student Council at the high school met with Mr. Venice and Mr. Ronnie Friday before school started and talked about like some of the upcoming plans for Paul Mountain in the district and how we can help support students in that. And overall, we've been receiving positive feedback from students about starting the school year off normal like Mr. or Dr. Manhattan said. Yeah, so I think that's it on our end. We're just excited to get back to the normal routine.
Would you introduce yourself?
Oh, yes, sorry. So my name's Philip Lawrence. I'm a senior.
My name's Patrick Fanning. I'm a junior.
Thank you. Welcome.
Just, just a, at the end of last year, which we didn't meet because of COVID incident, there was some students who were going to come to ask about the dress code. Do you know, is that still in the works? Have you heard anything about that?
So that's, that's a, that was a Walpole student group that we have.
Okay.
So they, they do want to come back. They're just kind of regrouping and everything, but that's something that we would definitely like to discuss because they worked on very hard on that last year.
No, good.
Good.
Great. So the next, the next thing on our agenda is building department administrator reports. And so if you want to start.
Sure.
You have your own special spot.
So we spent the first few weeks just getting to know our students, discussing expectation, developing routines and building relationships in all three buildings. When you walk into all three Walpole buildings this year, there's just a different feeling. Staff and students are just more relaxed. Laughter and excitement as you walk down the hallway. And it's just the confidence that our staff feels this year going into the school year, knowing the growth that their students made from last year and where they're coming in this year is just, they feel a lot more confident. At the start of the year. At the primary school, our pavilion was just finished this past weekend, and it looks amazing. Want to thank Benson Wood for doing all that work so quickly. They basically had it up in a day.
They're amazing.
They are. And they, they're going to be delivering some mulch and everything this week. And then once our picnic tables are in, we'll be ready to start using it as an outdoor ed space and using it for like gardening and everything as well. And the students are adapting and really settling in at the primary school. First few days are always a little challenging. It's a new routine for some of them, but they're doing really, really well. North Walpole School is just continuing to get to know the students and building relationships. And they're starting to gather data to start their after-school support for students in math and reading. It was very successful last year, so they're excited to do that again this year. And then at the elementary school, athletics started up last week. And then something that's really exciting for them is that we're now able to have lunch outside. We had four picnic tables that were donated by the eighth grade graduating class last year. So we have four picnic tables outside that we take the students out. If they choose to, they can sit in the grass as well. But that's always like the highlight of the day for them. They love it. And then we started homework club this week, which we also have transportation for students that need it, so they can work on specific skills and any specific content or assignments. And then we're also going to be doing an NHDI for our fifth through eighth grade students this year. Usually we do it for our pre-K to fifth, but we met over the summer and they really wanted to do a 40-minute weekly class with a group of students, fifth through eighth, that choose to volunteer to do it. And then you have to be committed for the year-long program and then you get to perform at King State College over Memorial Day weekend, and it's an amazing event. We went to it last year and it's just a great opportunity for the kids to really work at something for your entire year and then see the reward at the end. And the last thing I'd like to share is at all three schools, we currently have three therapy dogs in training that are trying to.
We have them.
And then we have, they're actually becoming facility therapy dogs. They have their tests coming up in a few months. So they've actually been really helpful the first few weeks of when students are struggling coming into the building and stuff. We have the dogs outside. They, they welcome in and when students just need a break, we walk, we take them for a walk at the middle school. They're allowed to take the older dog for a walk and everything. And it's just a really good way for helping to like calm their bodies and stuff. So it's just a great addition to our schools. And we're really excited to have that program as well.
Is our teacher the trainer or is it?
No, so we have our school counselor at the middle school has been doing therapy dogs for years. And she last year put in for a grant through the school to offer trainings to anyone in the district that wanted to do it. So we have an outside trainer that they meet with. They've been doing it for the past year. And all of them did it right when they're little puppies. And I think they can't take their final test until they're a year old. And they're all approaching that. So they'll be doing that. But she told me today that if anyone wants to, she's more than welcome to come in and do like a presentation on the program and everything that she's done. Well, that's bring that as well. Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
My turn? Sure. Okay. Hello, everybody. If you don't know me, I'm Tom Ronnie. I'm the principal of the high school. This is Brad Evans, the assistant principal. So every morning, our students actually begin their day. They get greeted at 6:45 or starting at 6:45 as they walk in the building. Good morning. We see all their shiny faces and the majority of the student body, in fact, returns. Good morning. They're awake and, and doing well. During the day, so far this year, our students have been polite, respectful, and working hard to be their best version of themselves. We've heard pleas, thank you, with many faculty mailing Wildcat winner cards home, and over 30 of them have been mailed home. Many of the cards have stated from the teachers how they appreciate how students have helped one another learn. So that's just a fantastic thing to be able to promote with what we're doing and how we're helping one another. That's Friday during lunch. We hosted a club to inform all students about the many opportunities to become involved within our student, within our school. One of our students, along with a few friends, are planning a fundraiser to raise money for cancer research in order to help find a cure. In the future, this student group is also hoping to assist with helping members of our community in our immediate fight counts. And lastly, at 8:45 this morning, our high school took a few minutes to remember September 11th of 2001. Obviously, we know that this was a tragic event. We also honored the many individuals who participated in yesterday's 9/11 activities, including our local emergency volunteers. I'm honored to share that today's news coverage of yesterday's remembrance includes a picture of one of our students, Jason Culver. He's in the Bradable Reformer and the national newspaper, the USA Today.
I'm Gail Rowe, Principal of the Alseth Attendance Area. And I'm glad I didn't go first because I forgot some things that Justin. We also have had a real positive cultures in our schools. Alseth Primary this year is basically a brand-new school when I, we lost two longtime teachers to retirement last year. And so we're working hard on communication. It seems to be relaxed, as Justin said, in, in all of our schools. Really feeling like it's a more positive, more normal start of the year. We had five school open houses, and this was new. We hadn't had an open house, obviously, in a couple of years. Grade five, Sarah Porter and Atworth met before school started, which we had great turnout. And Alseth Primary and Vilest met two different days at night last week. The elementary school's huge turnout. Light turnout for middle, but that's kind of always been classic. But, but it, you know, the people that were there, you know, were very clean. Kids were giving tours of the building because the parents had, hadn't seen the building before. Alseth Primary will have Colonial Theater present in the Vilest Gym on September 30th. Majesty's Secret Circus show to help children face challenges, complete with acrobatics, comedy, and juggling. And this was scheduled for last June and may have been canceled because too many of their actors had COVID. Vilest will be attending Allison Orchards on September 30th for an all-school trip sponsored by the PTO. The cost of a pack of apples is $15, but Allison's is going to charge us only $4 a bag. The Vilest PTO is picking up the cost, so all students can go home with a bag of apples. And the incentive behind that is the Vilest PTO is sponsoring Apple Crisp at the Langdon Fall Fest. The kids can go home with all their free apples and help make apple crisp. Alseth Primary will have a booth at Langdon Fall Fest with a pool duck game. We still have all those ducks from all the duck races from many years ago. Something like Dip for Ducks, I think, something along those lines. Sarah Porter families and staff will be helping park cars at the Langdon Fall Festival. We're in the middle of our homeland security visits. We had a very well-attended group at Atworth last week. Sarah Porter's and Allison primaries will be this week and Vilest next. And, you know, Dean Jory is very helpful and gives us ideas, you know, build buildings and part of this of how we can shore up security at our buildings. Our middle school counselor is hosting a parent information night with TLC Family Resource Center from Plamont to inform them about the Get Real curriculum plan for our eighth graders. Our current health curriculum has kind of been extended to include requirements that were just signed into law by the governor over the summer. And our classes in SEL and health already focus on many of these health-related topics such as child safety, wellness, prevention, prevention of sexual violence, child abuse, drug abuse, promoting exercise, hygiene, health, and interpersonal relationships. And TLC Family Resource Center will be working with our counselor and our health teacher during, you know, helping deliver some of that curriculum. And there's always an opt-out, a letter went home to parents today. We will be, Alseth Primary and Vilest will be entering the eye-ready assessments this year. Atworth and Sarah Porter piloted them last year, so I believe the whole district is now going to be on eye-ready instead of NWA mask, which we did for years. So they will be attending a training on the afternoon of the early release day. The other thing we're really excited about, Rich Neek is going to speak to you briefly. He, on, on his own, solely, has been working the last year and a half coordinating the American Heritage Tour for our Vilest students. As you know, for many years, Gesture Y sponsored, did all the light work. He's been working on it solely himself. This is a non-school-sponsored trip put on by World Strides, and that's the company I believe the high school has used for many years for their trips. And we're hoping to take 36, 7th, and 8th graders. And this is going to come up on the consent agenda. They want to go from October 17th to the 21st, so I'd like to ask Rich to speak to it.
Right now?
Yeah.
Okay. Just didn't know how I factored into the plan. I'm going to speak over here. Don't want to talk off the side. But my name is Richard Neek. I've been teaching history at Paul Mountain, Vilest Middle School for the past, the last 15 years. I've traveled on American Heritage Tour and New England Heritage Tour for the last 12. The only reason there was days, years off of that is because my first year I was not involved in the program and obviously what happened the last two. The trip is going to be almost exactly as sure, some of you in this room have actually traveled on it. The trip has been going on since 1975, '76. That's weird. So, show of hands.
Kids.
And some of the students, some of the people on this board, I've actually taken your own children on that trip.
Yep.
Your son was actually in my group yours too, I think.
Yes.
So the trip, I actually have documents to hand out to you if you'd like to see them. It is academic in nature, as you remember. So I think I have no copies for everybody. Well, it's a little bit different, a little bit different. And I understand you guys have other pressing matters to talk about. But the trip will emulate as close as possible as the trips of the past, but a few modifications because of price. We are also cutting out the Amish country because that kind of fell flat for many, many years. And we're going to use that time to actually run it instead, which is the home of George Washington. Sorry, Caleb. I know you'd like to see that. We are going to be starting very, very early on the 17th. We are leaving Vilest Middle School at 6:00 AM, and that is a lot of good planning I'm hearing already about that time. We're going to be leaving at 6:00 AM sharp and heading down to Philadelphia. Our original National Capitol. We'll be doing Liberty Bell, Betsy Ross House, Ben Franklin's grave, Ben Franklin's house, Alfred's alley, Independence Hall, Liberty Bell as much as we can. We'll also be eating at Convention Center and then going over to the Art Museum and seeing the Rocky statue. Then that night, we'll be going down to DC, so it's a very long first day. And we'll be spending several days in DC, going to as many Smithsonian's as we can, going to the Temple Gardens. Unfortunately, the Capitol Building is closed since the riots, but we're going to be using that opportunity to do a tour of the Library of Congress, which is the world's largest library in human existence. We will also be spending time at Arlington National Cemetery. Four of our students have been selected to lay a wreath with the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier, just like we used to do in the past. From Arlington, we'll be going to Mount Vernon and then spending the rest of our time traveling to Gettysburg and then back to Galiford and then back north, which will get us back to Vilest roughly about midnight on Friday. We're taking 36 students from 7th and 8th grade, as said before. We're going, we're doing that to drop prices as low as we can because the prices of this trip have gone up exceedingly. So more kids that travel, the cheaper will be for the rest of them.
In your projects.
Yes. While we're traveling, it's not just going out and hanging out with friends. While we are going to these different destinations, students will be giving oral presentations after doing research, the month leading to the trip, to be actually able to present what they have found about these different destinations and war memorials. The items inside the museums. So when these kids go into the air and space, they'll have an idea of what they should go see within their free time. Or they'll be standing right in front of the Washington Monument before we take a tour into it to understand why it's important or significant. We'll be having students do a presentation at Auden Murphy's grave, most decorated combat veteran of World War II. So everything that we see, students will be able to have, do a, do a presentation of while we're there. Trying to make it as academically oriented as possible. And with myself and Mr. Billy, we'll also be traveling. They're going to be doing a written report on that before we travel as well. So we're trying to tie in as many subjects as possible into this experience. Not only that, students will experience living in a hotel for four nights. Money, many of which have never left their towns. And I know from previous experience, some of the students have never even seen skyscrapers before. I once had a student stop me dead in her tracks in Boston because she wanted to go into a building because she never went through a revolving door before. So I do not see all, let me put it this way. I believe that this type of education is the most important that we can offer our Paul Mountain students. Especially after the last two years where they have not had a chance to actually leave the home. So that is what we plan on doing. It is 36 students who are completely fully paid, paid their entire trip so far. And we've done fundraising to raise that money.
And the fundraising has been outside of school.
Yes, nothing has been done school-oriented. We have two, two adult volunteers for my building who are also be traveling to help watch the 36 students with me and also travel. Any questions? Yes.
My only question is how much time will they get in each one of these places? Because this is a pretty intense.
Usually it will be about an hour and 30 minutes at each destination in the Smithsonian's. But when we go to Arlington, it will be most of the morning. I have not yet done Mount Vernon. I'm assuming it's going to be several hours there, at least two, because of the grounds when I traveled when I was a child. Philadelphia, we will have all day. So we will be spending a lot of time with guided tours at Liberty Bell and Independence Hall because you cannot be independently touring those by yourself. It depends because it's flexible based on what happens in the city. So we are going to hit as many of those as possible. There's also the chance of add-ons as well. We might actually be able to, after seeing the White House, I think it's on the third day, going over Ford's Theater, which is where Abraham Lincoln, the force of the shot. So we will, we try to make the kids get their monies worth. We jam as much as we can into this trip.
It's a really, I went on a trip, it was either 2017 or 18, you know, you're walking 10, 12 miles a day. The kids are so excited because they've never seen anything like this. And, you know, Rich brings history alive in his class anyway and has artifacts, if anybody's been in, in his room, there's artifacts in his room and all over the building that he's picked up. And it brings it alive. And the staff, we all had to do reports too.
After dinner, we'll be doing the night tour. So that's how we kind of save time for the day. So we go to the Lincoln Memorial, Korean War Memorial, Vietnam War, veteran statues, Lincoln, Jefferson, Martin Luther King Jr. We do as much as we can at night that's lit up like Christmas as we can. So that saves time in the Smithsonian's. There's, there is one museum that we are kind of time-sensitive with, and that's the Holocaust Museum because of the nature of that museum. There are two different versions of it. There's one called Daniel's Story, which is, I would feel comfortable bringing my nine-year-old daughter through, which does a very good job shielding atrocities of the Holocaust, told through the perspective of a 12-year-old child. And the other is the Holocaust Museum, which has exit routes.
Can opt out. My, my group, I think, they wanted to go through it and the other's like, no.
There are exit routes out of the museum if it becomes too overwhelming. But your question is valid because it is somewhat of an introduction to the Smithsonian's.
Okay.
You could spend the entire week in one. What you're trying to do is give an introduction to them. And
And I ended up with three kids in wheelchairs, so we missed the American History Museum. One had a sports injury and the other one twisted his ankle, and so we were moving a little slower.
I'm going to assume you didn't go on it as a child?
Not through this particular program. I did a different one for age. But I've been to most of these places, you know, just as a teenager or as an adult. And I was like, I would want to spend so much more time. And this is, it's just heavy. And I think the kids will be excited. Just listening to you talk about these things right now, I can understand why the kids you have are ready to go and excited because I'm inspired already.
When I made contact with the World Strides about a year ago, I shouldn't have, but I kind of told the students that it's in the works. As soon as I told them it was in the works of trying to go up around, then they assumed that it was going to happen. So it kind of put pressure on me to make sure that it did happen. Because it is a part of my career that I truly, truly miss. And I'm really, really hoping to bring it back, not just for my own sake, but the students' sake.
I don't know a single person that went on it that doesn't say it's one of their favorite memories in their life. So I appreciate that you're making it happen.
Not to keep bringing up my own personal life, but just two weekends ago, I was at Shaw's. And a kid working at Shaw's was like, are you Mr. Neek? I'm like, yes. I was in your group like six years ago. And it's, there's just so many different connections. I, I know Mrs. Robbie, Sharon Robbie, who used to do the tours, is still wondering if the tour, the tour is going to come back. And I told her proudly that it is.
Fantastic.
So. Any other questions? I know you ladies and gentlemen have lots to do tonight, so I don't want to take any.
We're limiting it to Vilest right now because he's a one-man show.
36, it's.
Yeah, the, all the coordination before was done by the Y.
Yeah. So calling hotels, getting meals off the ground, supervising students. I'm only one person. I only do so much. It would be great to have it extend to the other schools. But back in the day, when it was during the Golden Age, we'd be bringing two busloads of kids, 75 students plus 12 different adults, all of which were parent volunteers that traveled multiple years in a row. I really do not want to have parent volunteers and train people every single year to go out. So that's why it would be nice to have staff step up, but I understand, I mean, my wife, I gotta convince her almost every year to have me on this for a week. And then I might talk maybe next to you, ladies and gentlemen, about getting the Boston trip off the ground again. So.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you very much for your time.
Well. So I'm Sandra Reagan. I'm Special Leadership Director. That's a tough act.
Uh, so I'm Sandra Reagan, I'm a special education director. That's a tough act to follow. So, for us right now, uh, we're just struggling to get things going. We do have a significant number of students with special needs in the district this year. We're up to two hundred and seventy-five students. They have some pretty intensive needs and we still have staffing open. So, in the high school, we're still looking for a special education teacher. We're still short of coordinators, so we have two coordinators right now instead of the three coordinators. And we still have some open paraprofessional positions. Um, at the beginning of the school year, we had an occupational therapist assistant resign unexpectedly, so that's another position I'm looking for. There are a few prospects on that. A positive though, I have to say the special education teachers and related service staff have stepped up with a phenomenal job. Everybody's working extremely hard to meet our students' needs. Um, and now I've been able to get onto some of the buildings and it's just great what I see. I agree with all of the admin, the principals who have spoken so far to say that there's a real feeling of positivity in the buildings. Everybody's upbeat. Um, everybody's been extremely respectful. Everybody's just very, it, it's just a huge difference from what I saw a year and a half ago to what it's been now. So, it's a great feeling out there right now. So, even though we have some challenges in front of us, I'm really hopeful. Um, we are working collaboratively with four charter schools, just so you know that, uh, feed into our area here. And we have, I think, eight different out-of-district placements that we're working with. And then we work with both court systems in Cheshire County and Sullivan County also. So, that's part of what my coordinators do. We had a great beginning back to year, uh, back-to-school activity. I do have a related service provider, so it's fun, so I try to add fun to what we're doing too. Yeah, I think things are going okay. I just, if you know of anybody, special education teacher, occupational therapist assistant coordinator, reach out to me. We're still looking. Uh, but I've been really good up here. Obviously, I had really good, uh, vibe in our office and just really going about the school and just really, really pleased with the teacher for what everybody's doing. One last thing I just want to let you know, because I may reach out to school members and different parents. We are forming a special education leadership team. Um, we're forming that by the end of the month. It's just something I'd like to have continue on as we move forward and for like our parents to be involved. Uh, I'll be looking at special education teachers, regular education teachers, building administration, leader school board member. I don't want to get too large to start, this is something new, but I do want to get this started here in our district, so I'm excited to get that going. Thanks.
Yeah, and Quinn Claire, I'm the principal at, uh, North Charlestown Community School and the Charlestown Middle School. And I also am doing a report for Charlestown Primary School tonight because um, Principal Young is at a conference, so I will start with his report. Um. Been had a great start to this school year. CPS students are excited to be back, working on the first six weeks of school approach with developing expectations within the different locations within the school buildings. So, those are expectations for behavior and expectations for how we interact with each other and also academic. Great discussion and learning happening within the classroom community and reinforced within the, um, SEL or Social and Social Learning Class. Open House for CPS is scheduled for September fifteenth at five PM. Um, CPS is finally back to invite parents in for their student recognition assemblies. The first one will be at the end of September. Parents are invited with a personal call from the classroom teacher. Asking them in to share in the experience. Assemblies are designed around social and emotional learning with character traits, recognizing student success with parents and student involvement with crazy activities. And then lastly, working together to bring elementary schools back together. Some ideas have floated out there for springtime, in which the schools could combine for a common theme or activity day. So, back to, um, uh, CMS and NCCS. Uh, kids are kind of feeling back to normal a little, little bit more. We're having some normalcy again in the cafeteria. Um, we did some instruction this week on the appropriateness of sporks. But we have been successful in that training process. The first dance was Friday night and that was operated by the seventh-grade class at CMS, but it was a district-wide dance, so we invited students from the entire All-Mountain region and the tennis area. Um, they raised over a thousand dollars on that dance. There were a ton of kids there. DJ Selena had new technology that she is trying out and it looked like a club. With the light show that was happening, so that was pretty fascinating. And, um, our middle school sports are up and running, fully operational, so kids are enjoying participating in that process. Some low-hanging fruit that we've come across so far. We have done fire drills now in both buildings. Um, I know how to disassemble a fire pool box and reassemble the fire pool box. It just took three tries before we got that figured out. Um. We have some little furry friends at North that we need to address, but Bill says he's on it and will remove them quickly. They're hanging out in first and second grade. I think one of your children actually found one of them. They're very cute. Um, but they don't belong at school during the day anyway. Um, you know, things like that. We've been able to finally get keys today for all of our pairs at the middle school, so they haven't had keys back for the interior doors. We got that figured out today. We have paper towels in the hallway near the cafeteria. Um, the front door at CMS may work now without kicking it, I think. That was about an hour of Tim's time today. And so, um, we lost two kids, or we found them, but we did lose them for a moment of time with the busing system, but we have a whole new procedure in place, so that won't happen again. And I think I have almost every name down at CMS for the kids. I'm still working on North, but the, the North kids are more well-behaved. Started this school year, if you don't know their name, it's okay. At CMS, we need to know their names, so you can call them on it. But we're, we're there now. We have September twenty-third, early release day. We are hope this is okay to share. We're getting a thirty-yard dumpster at North and cleaning up the basement. We will follow the district disposal policy, I promise you. But it is time to haul some stuff out. Um, Open House at North is also the fifteenth, so we have families with kids in both buildings. It allows them to be out just one night and be able to connect at CPS and North. Um, I, the site base meeting is also September fifteenth after Open House. And, um, the CMS Open House is gonna be at the end of September, but we haven't determined that date yet. And then lastly, I am still looking for pair of positions at both North and CMS. Um, and we still have a sixth grade opening at CMS, so I have somebody who's coming to class from tomorrow. And maybe that will pan out, but, uh, we are still hiring in both buildings.
One thing with the, um, built, building folks is that, um, something that, that I would like, and we had on, we had on our, after long discussion, we finally came up with goals last year, near the end of the year. So, um, one of our goals last year.
I didn't say anything.
I know, and I had to look at you, Shelley. One of our goals was that we would have, um, that we would have presentations from the different schools at, at our board meetings on a regular basis. And so, I am so happy to be having just reports from the administrators so that we know, because we love, I, I, I will, I will speak for myself. I love hearing what's going on in schools because that's why I joined the school board, was to work on what's going on in the schools. So, um, I would love it if we would like rotate around of having, um, some kind of a presentation of kids, um, on a regular basis. And we can talk about whether we want to do that to make the board meeting longer, or if we want to have that presentation be before the board meeting so that the kids don't have to stay for the whole board meeting, or, you know, how exactly we want to do that. But I would really like to incorporate, um, having a presentation of kids, um, at one, not every meeting, but, um, once a month. So, um, just a little thing that I'd like us to be thinking about.
Maybe they can show us the presentation on sporks.
Sporks, yeah.
I have a young man who will run demonstrates.
I'm pretty sure. I hope it's not my son.
Not yours. He has his own name, but yeah.
I mean, our first, our first might be the discussion about the, um, about the dress code. Yeah. From Waffle. I mean, that might be something that we start with, so.
And I think when we start having that, the buildings too, we could always have.
Yeah, right.
At that building. It's Waffle, Waffle students can put on all the presents.
Presentation there and everything as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. So, yes.
We give Kristen's for her.
Oh, yes, please.
So, Kristen wasn't able to make it today, but she did send a report that she wanted me to briefly mention. There were fifteen summer projects that were completed by teams of teachers. And that thirty-six of the teachers were involved in those fifteen projects. Sixteen teachers also attended Bogap Training, which is ongoing assessment project in the areas of math, specifically additive reasoning, multiplicative reasoning, fractions, and proportional reasoning. So, they spent a lot of time just talking about those things and breaking it down. And hearing from the teachers who attended, they thought it was phenomenal. And then twenty-seven teachers attended foundations training, virtually foundations is early reading, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah.
Um. We have some, or have had. August twenty-ninth was in-service day. There was a presentation by Nick Ferriolo on understanding gender identity, followed by presentation by one of our attorneys on Title IX. Today was Dibbles Training, which is kind of like a reading screening type thing. Stands for Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy Skills. September twenty-third is gonna be training on I-Ready, which was mentioned earlier. That's taking the place of NWA assessments. And we have sixteen new teachers this year who are beginning to attend their mentoring stuff. And then, as she mentioned last time, we're continuing our work in K-four literacy and grade six-eight math.
Is the mentoring, is that one year or two years? How long, how long does a mentoring program go?
Sarah, I'm here.
Oh, you're there. Hi.
Mentoring is a one-year program.
Okay.
And the Dibbles Training is on Friday. I apologize.
Oh, okay. Well, I was wrong, so that's.
Yeah. Question for curriculum. Um, I keep checking the New Hampshire website to see the data for twenty-one, twenty-two is gonna be released. Nice to stand up there. Do we have any idea when that data for testing is gonna be released?
Um, so, we were told, um, last year that it was gonna be released probably mid-October. And it wasn't until probably close to mid-November before it was released, so I'm anticipating something similar.
This was kind of disappointing.
Any other questions? Any questions for any of the administrators from anyone? All right, Mary.
Now you get the boring stuff. The kids is the fun part. But I'm first gonna let Tim speak on the twenty-twenty-one audit. So, if you want to go with.
Yes.
If you want to cooperate, whichever you rather do.
All right.
My name is Tim Green. I'm a member of Robert Green with the District Auditers. I'm actually here to present, um, this fiscal year ended in June, basically, twenty-twenty-one. So, not the year that just ended, the year before that. Just for note, the year, we have preliminarily started the audit for twenty-twenty-two. Uh, I'm in the stages of completing the year twenty-five of the district and then we will kind of, we've got planned, uh, a scheduled date in October to come in and commence the full audit, which is a typical timeframe for the audit of all in past years. So, I'll try to be brief because there's, I can get buried in this stuff and this is not the most exciting thing that we're gonna have to sit through. Um, especially, I don't know if it was following along or not at the moment, but. And so, what I'll say is, when you look at the audit report, the main, uh, prize that we are providing is this two-page opinion letter. We're coming in to, to, uh, look at your financial statements, which is the goal of this big packet here. Uh, these financial statements, statements on behalf of the district, if you will. We have assisted in preparing that because there's some technical aspects of it that it's, it's, uh, our standards allow us to be independent while also helping you provide these financial statements for the public. But our goal is to provide, provide an opinion on that. So, I'm pleased to announce that it's been this way ever since I've worked for the district, which is about ten years. Uh, it's, the district received a clean opinion for all opinion units. I guess there are multiple opinion units for the district. Uh, that's just a technical term, but. Again, pleased to say, you know, the Fall Mountain Schools received a clean opinion. Uh, we also did a single audit. The district's always been subject to a single audit. Uh, you're subject to a single audit when you have over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal expenditures. So, this split with this child nutrition program, the Special Ed Department with, uh, Title One Project, so on, uh, always breached that threshold. So, so every year, we look at one or two programs typically, and the programs we look at depend on the size, as of the last time they've been audited and so on. So. At fiscal year twenty-one, for example, we audited, uh, for the single audit process, we just went to the child nutrition cost there. Twenty-one was, was the year that every, uh, meal basically was free. Uh, so it was, it was a big increase in the federal funding for that program, so it was kind of a highlight that we need to hit. Some financial highlights, and I'm gonna try to be brief. You have two, you have a statement net position as the first two exhibits. This is a full accrual basis, so this is like a business statement. The, the goal is to be as close to a business-type of statement, so that more people are, can read it and understand possibly what's going on. What this does include though, however, this includes your capital assets and includes your long-term debt. So, it's not, uh, these are not figures that necessarily you make operating decisions off of because, as you can see, you have a total net position as a deficit of fifteen million dollars. The bulk of that, not even all, all of that basically is because you were required to put your pension liability on your books for full accrual basis. So, the district's reporting a thirty-million-dollar net pension liability with their tax system. The tax system hires an X-ray, they provide all the accounting, so they basically just put out the report every year that says, here's each member's share of that full liability. There are some schedules that the district puts in that, that detail how much is funded versus unfunded each year as, as their various factors change. Uh, so the information is provided by the district for, for everyone to look at. So, after you move on from your, your, uh, statement activities, uh, exhibit two basically just kind of shows you your program revenue versus your functions that you have for expenses. So, you can see, for example, construction is obviously your main expense. You have twenty-two, sort of twenty-two million dollars for the year into twenty-twenty-one. Of that, you have some charges for services, your tuition, if you will, about six hundred thousand dollars came in. Uh, you receive grants and other contributions of another one point three million. But, but for that program as a whole, you can see that it's, you're having net expense for that, for that function of just over twenty-three. Basically, because of your school, district, your school assessment to the town and their state grant, state tax, that's not targeted to any one function. So, it's a, it's just considered general revenue. So, that's, that's your main funding source for any school district in the state. And you can see your total general revenue is almost thirty-three million dollars. So, at the beginning of the fiscal year twenty-one, for the net position, the district was, uh, had a negative thirty, just, just under negative fourteen million dollar net position. Uh, there was actually a decrease in the net position of about one point five million. So, you ended the year at just over fifteen million dollars deficit. And again, primarily because of the changes to dependent liability and your other post-apartment debt. When you look at governmental funds, this is your modified accrual. This is what you're basing your budget on essentially. Uh, so for that, all your major funds are reported. You have a general fund, the grants fund, the infant service fund that are considered major. And then you have some smaller funds that are combined in aggregate. So, for the general fund, you have total assets of just over seven million dollars. Uh, total liability is just over two million. And you ended with a total fund balance of five million. Now, this number seems significant is because your trust funds, your capital reserve funds and your other trust funds that are held by the trustees of the various towns, as well as Charlestown. That is included in that number. So, of that, almost three million dollars is, is funds held in your trust funds. So, it's not considered available. It's considered committed for those capital reserves and other trust funds. Uh, but you did have an unassigned fund balance of just a one point five million. Uh, in years past, obviously, as you're probably aware, the residents tend to vote to set up the five hundred thousand dollars. It's kind of the typical one article I've seen. That was the year that they, that it was modified at, at the district meeting, or I believe, to zero. So, typically, there's five hundred thousand dollars that's set aside as soon as that March meeting happens, uh, in that. So, this one year that we're looking at did not actually occur. Beyond that, there's kind of a crosswalk between the two bases. So, you can see from the full accrual basis, as I said, where you're capitalizing assets, you're showing your debt payments, reducing liabilities. There's a crosswalk between the two bases there that is, is, can be helpful to the reader. Uh, for example, I'm looking at exhibit four. All the long-term liabilities of the district totaled just over forty-three billion dollars. So, you can see how that is a factor on that. So, you did that, that large number that was at the start of your financial statements. Beyond that, the only other item I typically highlight when I'm speaking in front of a board is, uh, one of the final exhibits, I think is always very useful to anyone reading these and for the U S of eighteen. And it's the summary of your unassigned fund balance. Uh, so it really, it makes it clear like what happened for the year basically, because you have detailed exhibits that feed into the schedule. So, the schedule shows you that your unassigned fund balance at the beginning of fiscal year twenty-one was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You use a hundred, almost two hundred thousand dollars, uh, for your. You use a hundred, almost two hundred thousand dollars for your assessment essentially, as you're required to, and then appropriate that five hundred thousand for the year four. They also had a revenue surplus of three hundred thousand and an underspent balance of your appropriations of almost a million dollars. So you had a budget surplus of one point three million. A decrease in non-spendable when you, when you were self-funded for your insurance, you carried a prepaid, you was carried one month of that insurance, essentially the insurance premium. That went away during this year twenty one. So when you have a prepaid item, you have a non-spendable fund balance that matches because it, as soon as the year rolls over, you no longer have that because now it's fixed. So that went away. So you actually increased your undersigned fund balance. And again, as I said, you no longer, for this one year, had that five hundred thousand dollar commitment that passes that district meeting in March. So you actually added five hundred thousand dollars back to your undersigned fund balance. That's how you got to your one point five million dollar undersigned fund balance that you're in. Lastly, the single audit items. As I said, we had, you had a clean opinion at the front and we also were happy to note that we didn't have any findings that were required to be reported or that we determined necessary to be reported for, for U S board members to, to address essentially. So, and that's been the case for a couple of years now at least. So. And I haven't, it's been, I can't think of any sort of significant findings. Sometimes we'll put in more routine findings, if you will, if there's something that I see the district really needs to focus on correcting. I mean, if there ever a significant issue, obviously, I bring it up to, the process tends to be, I meet with business administrator or superintendent necessary or whatever, as we're, as we're there essentially as a kind of an informal X conference. We kind of highlight, okay, here's exactly what. I've said, if we, if we provide recommendations to staff as we are looking at something, that's also something we kind of deal with, it's something minors, like, well, consider doing this or consider, you know, accounting for this transaction differently this way, because it's not an issue that is misleading your numbers, but it's a way of improving efficiencies or other things. Okay. Beyond that, I'm always available too for asking questions throughout here. As board members, you're always welcome to reach out to us while we're in the district as well too, if that's something you are interested in. Questions. A lot of information.
Yeah, you should. It's on our website.
I didn't see it on the website.
Should be on the website. I can send it to you. I have it.
Thank you.
So the one before.
I'll send it out to all you. So you have it.
Thank you, Tim.
So, um. I attempted to send out all of the AP stuff and vouchers to you on Friday. Come to find out, I don't have the ability to send to just school board. I had to pick everybody individual because it all bounced back to me. Brendan knows I sent it because he got it and he was all excited that I sent it Friday morning. So I will make sure I do that again the next Friday that we have before meeting. So you have it. And now I'm on that school board link or that email address so that it will get to you. If I'd known, like I said, I would have individually picked you, sent it that way. Um, next thing is our year to date update for twenty two. Obviously, we don't have audited numbers, but before the five hundred thousand comes off, it's one point four million. So the five hundred thousand is going to come off and it's going to be roughly around nine hundred thousand. It's going to go back to the taxpayers. Obviously, give or take, those are unaudited numbers that can change. Just want to make sure everybody knows that. But that's where we're looking, where we're going to land for twenty two. And of course, we know a bulk of that is just in the area of the teachers and staff and things like that. But again, it'll be right around that number. We've been working very hard in the office to get all the new employees into the system, get them paid. It's, it's been kind of crazy, but it's been good. All the people have worked very hard in, in the, in the business department and it's, it's been great. They've made my transition in much easier. Again, still have a lot to learn, given the fact that this is a very big district and, you know, the board is very different. But if you have any questions, obviously, reach out to me. You know, when it comes to the, the finances and stuff like that. We've had, go back to, we've met with the board, Budget Committee as well, a few times Brendan and I have. You know, I, we're such a boring area. I don't know if you guys have any questions for me. But oh, free and reduced, actually, real quick, we've gotten a ton of applications. It's been really, really good. I'd say we're close to probably around six hundred, just in physical applications. That doesn't just include the online applications. We are reaching out to people now if there's any problems with applications or missing some information and things like that to get everybody processed. But it's, it's been really, really good. Very happy and pleased with the amount that's there. Still, again, another push, you'll probably be seeing a letter from me going home again saying, please, get your information in. Again, one more try, but.
Are those up from years past?
Yes, that we are up from the previous years.
I'd like to thank Mary. She came to a lot of our open houses and I think parents felt very comfortable to go up to her. She's got a lot of them happy.
That's, that's great. Yeah.
Yeah.
Makes a big difference to see, to, to really reach out. That makes a huge difference. I know we, many years ago, when I was a PTO, many years ago, when I was the PTO president in Acworth, why, we had a real problem with not getting our title in Acworth because people just didn't fill out the forms. And we made a big push for people to fill them out and lo and behold, we got our title back.
And I had a really good response in Acworth, but I also had Alice working with me as well from the special ed department. She's been working really hard and she's done some great stuff. She created the barcodes and the people could just scan it and fill it. Yeah. And it, so people could just scan it on their phone and it just comes up and they can fill it out. It was just, like I said, we had a few things at the beginning where things weren't working, but we got them under control and we got them going. But again.
It's like, like this email thing was, Mary called me up. She was frantic. She was like, I'm so sorry. It didn't work. It didn't work. Everyone's going to be mad at me. I was like, you know, things, things happen. It's okay, you know.
I know, but like I said, I told you I'd do it. I know that Shelley, okay. But like I said, free and reduced to get, I'm going to put a plug out there to anybody that's listening. It's almost nineteen hundred dollars a kid. It's huge and it impacts Title One. It impacts all of our other grants and some of the new ones that have come in to the adequacy aid. And like I said, it's been really great, even the ones that don't qualify. It still helps us with our demographic and things like that.
And that's my question about, so my, my. Can you explain what the benefit is for people who clearly will not qualify for any of those financial demographic amounts, but why they should fill it out?
Yeah, I'm going to let Brendan.
All right.
Yeah. For a long time.
Yeah. I mean, I think the benefit of it is, there's probably two main benefits. One is it shows that our outreach is working, you know, that we're really trying hard to get to everyone. And then the other part is sometimes people don't really know because there's different categories you could fall into. And, you know, if you can help someone even a little bit, it's not a bad thing. And the more that we get, the more likely it is that, you know, I, my understanding was a number of years ago, not that many, but you were able to cover all of your breakfast, for example, based on the reimbursements that we were getting for free and reduced. And so it was just beneficial to all children. That sound about right?
Yeah, and it puts people in different income levels too. I mean, it helps with the, with the grants, you know, I mean, so like I said, it just, and it gives a lot of information to the state as well. You know, so that if they think, for instance, I don't know, but if they look at their income levels, they can see there are people that are right on the edge that maybe, maybe they need to start increasing those or changing those. I mean, there's, there's all sorts of financial benefits to it for not just the people that qualify, but for people that might not, that might eventually. Or like we said, you get those free and reduced numbers and you get the money back.
Right. So for example, if, if there's a family of four with a two hundred thousand dollar income, they know they're not going to qualify for anything.
Right.
Why do you want them to fill out the form?
Yeah, I, I think it's one of those things. There is a point at which you probably don't.
Okay.
But it's still, you know, I mean, there's no harm.
Well, I think that, I think that's, that's the issue, right? Is where is this, I'm putting down my personal, this is what I get.
Yeah.
I'm putting down my personal information. Where is this information going? How is it being tracked? Doesn't necessarily mean that it's a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar income house. It's just, there are people that are not comfortable with sending that type of information into the state. And I don't think anything that we say is going to make that type of individual comfortable enough to send that information in. And some of those people are just not going to be able to catch, but.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's going to be some that you're just not going to catch. It's, you know.
And that's understandable, you know, but everything that's done is, I mean, I can say within my office, it's confidential. You know, it's, it's very confidential. Nothing goes only between myself and one other individual in the office and that's it. So. But like I said, it's, it's been really, I, I'm very pleased with the numbers that we've gotten. You know, we've gotten a lot from Charleston. Elsa, I mean, Acworth was incredible. I probably got seventy five percent, almost eighty percent of the kids up there. But they had an incredible turnout for their, their open house too, which was great, you know.
We're a great town.
Right, you're a great town. I know, I grew up there. And Langdon, you know, same idea. They had a really good turnout and stuff. So, you know, we're getting.
Did you have another question? My own other question would be, since both CPS and CCS open houses are at the same time, if you need help doing one, I would happily go man a table for most of it, but I'm hoping somebody will be at, I don't know, you'll be at CPS.
Well, between the, Alice and I, we've been pretty good about coordinating.
Okay.
To figure out who can be where.
To miss one, so.
I will reach out if, when I reach out to Alice and she can't. Like I said, we knew what the schedule was, but some of the schedules hadn't been firmed up yet, so.
And Mary, the deadline is by October first.
Yes, it's October first. So, um, you know, you never know, they might extend it, but October first really is our good on. And they did it last year.
So thanks for all the hard work.
Trying, like I said, but next year will be even better, I'm sure. But Andy, did you have a question?
Well, just a comment to Alyssa's question is, I think in years past, the push to get people to sign up for free and reduced was there was a significant number of students and families that were falling through the cracks. And also it is a revenue stream for the district. So it wasn't to get everybody to sign up, see where they fell, you know, just to get the numbers up. It was, is to try to help people that were eligible that weren't being helped.
Right, I, I recognize, but I just have a, a number of people who ask me, I'm not going to qualify. Do they need it for any reason other than free and reduced lunch? And I, I just didn't have a good answer.
Yeah.
And so.
It's significant revenue.
If you qualify, but so it isn't if you don't qualify. It's not like for some other.
Vegetables, I think that's based on income. Yeah, I think it's, I think it's that saying of, I think where they're getting caught up is, fill it out even if you, even if you know you don't qualify. That's been the motto for the last couple of years. If people are like, well, that doesn't even make any sense. Why would I give you my info? And it's just because you want as many, you want to touch as many people as you can, but saying something like that, then for some people, it raises red flags. Like, why do you want me to fill it out? But if you don't qualify, you don't qualify. That's, I mean.
And if people aren't comfortable, then by all means, you don't, no, you don't have to feel like, yeah, I understand that and I respect it. So.
One more question, Mary. I, I know that sickly buyback isn't unfunded liability. So when you, when we start the budget process, do we have an idea of faculty that are going to retire that qualify so that we can budget for it?
Yes.
In that year?
Yes, we should, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yep.
I think it's November first, you just have to let, you know, it may have changed in the contract, but they have to let you know what they.
Is that enough time to put it in the budget?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
That's reasonable. Yep. All right, other questions for Mary?
I got you now, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Number four is recognition of visitors and public input. So do we have, we do have some visitors. So would you guys like to say anything? This is your chance. Yes, Mike?
Mike Aaron, I'm a member of the FMRC Budget Committee. I just want to know if that audit report is going to be made available to us.
Yes, I can get it to you.
Okay.
Yep, I can get it over to you.
Yep. And Mary, on this, on the, on the, the website, there's a spot that says audit reports, but it just is, it goes up to two thousand twenty. It doesn't have.
Okay, I'll make sure it gets in there.
Yep, doesn't have the current one on there.
Okay, I'll make sure it gets in there. So.
If you thought that it had been put in.
I, I thought it was, but I will make sure that it gets in.
Yeah. Not, not to belabor the point, but.
That's fine.
So, anything else? Yes.
I wrote mine itself. Good evening. My name is Michelle Spear Blake. I currently have two children enrolled in the district. One child who's in first grade, who just moved to North Charleston School after attending kindergarten at Charleston Primary, much to my dismay. The other is in kindergarten at Charleston Primary. Many questions have gone unanswered as to why such a move for my child is necessary. There's no clear line or boundary to show who goes where. My oldest child was moved from a school where he lives five minutes from a school to where he now lives ten minutes from. There are other children who went to school last year who live closer to North Charleston School, yet for unknown reason, we're still alone at Charleston Primary. I've spoken with the interim superintendent as well as both principals from Charleston Primary and North Charleston. While the meeting has solved some issues, they cannot give any details about the district boundaries of the town to determine where a child would go to school. Through an email conversation with Shelley Andrews, there are no discernible lines or boundaries that are used to decide where a child may attend school between CPS and CCS. I quote, "There are many factors that come into play when a decision is made, not just boundaries or line." And another message states that some parents request North Charleston School, while others may have transportation needs and teacher matches. This begs the question, do only parents who want their children to go to North Charleston have a choice? North Charleston School also doesn't have a full-time nurse, which seems inappropriate, given the number of students within the school in their age. The questions I would like answered are as follows. As of today, September twelfth, two thousand two, what are the boundaries determined where a child is supposed to go to a certain school? And where would a parent find this information? What are the standards that need to be met to keep a child within a school here she is born in and already has established services related? What standards must a parent need in order to have a choice regarding their child's education within a school district that have no lines or boundaries to determine the school placement for a child? What are the standards a school and or district must need to not employ a full-time nurse within every school? Thank you.
So. I'm not sure how to address.
Those don't need to be addressed. You just take it in.
Just take it in. All right. So we will, we will take that under advisement and we will get back to you. Okay. All right, and next.
I'm Haley Sinter. I also have a first grader in North Charleston. And I understand that there is not a defined line. So my concern is if I was to move, did my child then go back to the primary school or the start of first grade? It's very hard for me to explain to a six-year-old why he has to go to another school when all his friends get to stay there. We live in the same town. And I don't have an answer for him and nobody's going to be able to speak to him. So. Question concerns, why can't we keep the primary school, three K, three third, or whatever it needs to be, North Charleston, fourth and fifth, having Walpole as a senior. I'm just not sure why we have to put them up based on where they live. And I don't know where that line is.
Thank you. Quite a few years ago, there were similar questions around the, the wallstead issue in terms of people, where did the line go between going to Walpole and going to, remember that? No, that was a big, that was, because it kind of was, it was kind of, at first, it was kind of just, it just kind of happened. And then it got to a spot where we needed to make a decision. So thank you for bringing it up and we need to make a decision. So. Judy, did you just come with Mike? Judy, did you just come with Mike, or did you wanna speak? Just so maybe there are, you know, that our esteemed, um, our esteemed representative might, you know, to speak to us.
Thank you for the offer, but I would send an invitation to the superintendent that if there are any questions about pass legislation or pending legislation.
I definitely will, if I always have questions.
And Judy's wonderful to talk to. All right. Any other public input? All right. And we have new business, there's going to be, um, the delegate, delicate, yeah. The delegate, delegate assembly, um, is October 1. And I believe that there's information on that in your packet, correct?
Yes.
And, um, in the past, why Joe has gone to that, um, and been our representative. What we. Got a big day tomorrow, school principal will be greeting you in the morning, make sure you say good morning.
Yes, ma'am.
Need to have a discussion on that.
I think the question was just if anyone wanted to go to it, besides Joe. If you had any resolutions, I guess.
Yeah, is there anything?
What, yeah, my question was, um, having read, I read the minutes from the last year's delegate meeting. And there were people that had questions about sending a delegate without due authority. And so if we just send Joe, it doesn't seem like we have, he's got like due authority to vote for our, to vote for us. I think we need him, we need to create that position possibly as one of our standing committees.
Um, it was my understanding that we had a motion that nominated him to be our delegate.
Okay.
In that gave him the authority to vote on our.
I believe that is what we did.
Okay.
It would be nice to have this to hear.
Sure, you can ask her.
And are we gonna have time within our next meeting to actually vote on other districts, it appear that they have voted on those resolutions prior to indict, to give Joe. Do we have time to do that in our next meeting, or did you do it last year?
We did not do it last year, we had Joe, um.
We put trust in him because he had done the research, but I, I agree that that would be a good idea for this, uh, for this board. And I think we would have time at the next meeting, which is before the October 1st Delegate Assembly, is it October 1st?
Yes, October 1st.
So.
Yeah, as long as we are efficient, because we have quite a bit to do in our next meeting.
So do you want a motion to nominate Joe as our delegate?
Yeah, I think that would. I think that would make sense, because, yeah.
All right.
All right, discussion on having Joe as our delegate.
I just wanna say, I know he does the research and I appreciate all the work he puts in, I think he's a, a good representation of this board, if that.
Right, and he, he, he really, really puts the effort into reading through and finding out the information, so, and, and coming back to us with the information, so. That's good. And in, in the past, last year was the first time we've had a delegate, so. You know, we're kind of learning how to do this, did we used to send delegates?
Uh, we, occasionally we did, but ma- basically what we did was we read through the resolutions and decided if we as a board were gonna support them or, or not support them. And sent, we sent something so that they knew what Farm Mountain stance was.
Oh, I like that process, but let's not get bogged out.
Yeah, yeah. So we'll send Joe with a thing of, yes, we like it or no, we don't. Oh, all in favor of the, I saw that little, all in favor of, um, Joe is the delegate.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, Joe will be our delegate. All right. Strategic planning and next steps. That will be Alyssa.
Yes. So, um, I've been thinking about this an awful lot. So last Wednesday, Brennan gave me an hour and probably a little bit more than that of his time, just to kind of rehash out and where we are with our strategic plan. And I'm hoping that I can bring us all together and actually have more of a plan than we came up with at the last board meeting. So, right now, we know we have a decent plan, but it expired in 2021. And so what I would like to see is our board decide firmly on a committee of the board. You know, Shelley and I, or a couple of people, plus some community members and other stakeholders. Or whether we are going to be an entire board, who's going to look at this and take it to the community and bring it back to the meeting to discuss in public and that kind of thing. So, uh, that's my first question, and I don't really wanna address them one at a time, or if you want me to.
Why don't you go through what, everything that you have, and then we can take it one by one.
Okay, wonderful. Um, so once we've decided on whatever kind of committee we have, I would like to see us have individual meetings in the communities with stakeholders to find out what they, eh, like about this 2016 to 2021 plan. What can be called out of it, um, what we think we've done, and what we still need to do. Those are really important things, it's a fluid document, and I don't know as though, um, it's been updated in the most efficient way. I think we've done a lot of these things, and I think the community doesn't necessarily know that. And I wanna make sure we're keeping them abreast of everything that's being done and what we still need to do. So, there's scheduling those things. Um, the only other thing that I specifically had for today was that, um, in that discussion, we created sort of a new category for the agenda, which, so we have new and old, and this would be a standing, um, business. So we could discuss at every first meeting of the month or whatnot, exactly where we're at with the strategic plan and keep it focused and keep it present, um, and make sure we really come up with something when we. Go to.
I will, thank you.
Perfect, um, how to present when we have our March meeting, I think it's March, to discuss what we wanna do going forward. So.
Have a question. So, Andy made a very good point in our last meeting, where he said, we have a lot on our plate. A lot right now, um, and I do like the plan and everything like that. But if we're gonna add something to our agenda every single month, I would like it to be the Articles of Agreement discussion, not the strategic plan. Which I thought there was some type of agreement the last time we met, that we were gonna wait and hold that off until next year and try to take off a bunch of stuff that's on our plate, because that is so, that is such a big project. But maybe I misunderstood everybody. I, I don't really, I, we have a lot, we sat on a Saturday and pounded out a whole bunch of stuff. And after, kind of, the last meeting, I would have to agree with Andy that I think trying to take this on right now or even within the next couple of months, it, it's, it's just, all we keep doing is adding stuff and we're not accomplishing anything. Well, we did, cuz administrators are now presenting, so we got something off our goal list. So, low-lying fruit we'll take, and I don't think the strategic plan is a low-lying fruit, so.
Yes, Andy.
So, this will address some, your questions, and Shelley, uh, I thought about, a lot about that since our last meeting too. In the meantime, Misty sent me the strategic, strategic plan, so I could be refreshed on it. The strategic plan that we have is fairly new and fairly fresh, and still relevant. Farm Mountain hasn't had a strategic plan in forty-something years, this is the first one, to my knowledge, other than vision statements and mission statements. Okay, which is part of it. So my thought, your first question was, if, if you wanna pursue it, I think your committee of two is, is excellent. Way, we used to always have a, a number on the agenda for committee reports. And strategic committee would be a report, uh, articles agreement would be a report. I don't know, whatever other committees we have, but they would give, like the reports of the administrators, the committees would give a brief report. Or the committee chair would give a brief report every meeting, so the whole board was up to speed. But I think that's easy enough, and it could be quick. But I, I, the strategic plan committee, I think, could be better served this year, taking effect after March. When you've got a board, a new board, new committee assignments, and, and a year to do it. But it doesn't matter to me, either way. I, I don't think this time it's as much work as last time, because you have a foundation, you know. Before we did.
Answer that, I think it's, uh, actually a terrific document, I just think it is, being that it's a fluid document.
Sure.
It should take some conversation and should never sit static. And so.
Right.
To me, it's relevant that we talk about it, not as, um, as a big project, but as part of our everyday thought process here, because it's the reason we're here.
Well, that's one document that board members should have on them at board meetings, so that they can look at it.
Absolutely.
Along with all the policies that reflect the school board. You know, the school board, this, I don't know how many, seven or eight policies that directly affect the school board. And every school board member should be intimately knowledgeable about those policies. Because sometimes that can guide decisions from getting off track, you know, and going off on tangents, because it's stuff that we don't do.
Yes, sorry, I'm trying to get.
Yeah, my question after reading the strategic plan was looking at the strategy and outcomes, and wondering what is the status of those outcomes.
Yes.
That's my biggest question. Teachers reporting the curriculum's aligned is the first outcome on priority one, I don't know where we are with that. Let's kind of, let's, let's think of information I would like.
Yes.
Um, I, I don't have a good answer on how that happens.
So, well, so do you really actually wanna work on it, like, look at it and update it? Or do you really wanna look at it and figure out how to use it to benefit us and gauge what we're doing with our goals? And how, how do we do that? Is that?
That's really the question I'm asking, I don't think, it's not like starting a new process where you need to, you know, draw people together and have all these focus committees and groups and things like that. It's really, how do we use what we have currently and keep it present? Like, I heard a lot of the things from our administrators that are in this plan, they ought to be connected. And so I want those things to start happening, and, and really use this living document and make it relevant.
So maybe that's where we start, is how do you, how do we? How do we place this document in everyday use when it comes to school and the board? Maybe that's where we go.
The easiest, quickest answer to that is that when the administrators give their reports, they cite what part of the strategic plan, something that they're doing, you know. Is relevant.
They're probably throwing, you just said that.
Well, I mean, that's the reason for the plan, right?
It is, and I think, I do think you're already doing it, it just, it would be nice.
It would just, just to have, to see the connection, yeah.
I think one of the things that we had talked about too, and it might tie all into this, is even if we took an area, right, of the plan and, you know, that alignment piece, okay, when you present out at this next meeting, in addition, just sort of say, is this a relevant thing that you're still doing, and where do you think you are? Cuz it was really one of the things we were talking about, is it's a great document, but it's merely impossible to do every single thing at every single time, but we're doing a bunch of it. So just sort of getting the clarity of, okay, which parts are we doing, which parts aren't we that we should be? And which parts aren't we, but you know what, it was important six years ago. But now, maybe it's important a little bit later. And so I think if you keep the committee, like you said, Andy, and, you know, Alyssa and Shelley, or me, or the admin, we come back with a question for either the board to ponder, or for the admin to report out on. You're keeping it alive, you're keeping it fresh.
And in terms of the Articles of Agreement, if you look at the school board calendar that, that was, that shared with you. We have, um, on the, um, on the 24th of October, our workshop is, is completely dedicated to the Articles of Agreement, and on the 26th of, of September, this one is coming up, so I said we have a lot on that one. Um, we have, um, we need to do the, the superintendent search, we need to talk about that, but we also have Articles of Agreement. So we're, we have, we have one and a half, um, meetings that are specifically dedicated to Articles of Agreement to get that kind of organized and moving in a direction, so that then.
Six months.
So that then, right, so that then the committee, the committee that's working on it can then continue to move forward and, and come back to us and, and, and we can continue to work, um, with it. But we, we have time to work as a group to get ourselves going, so, um. So I, I just wanted to, to make sure that we said in public that we are, we do have on our calendar already that we are, we have dedicated time for the Articles of Agreement, we want to, we want to make sure we are working on that. That's something that we did definitely say that was very important for us.
So Alyssa, if you messaged me again about meeting about the strategic plan, I won't blow you off like I did last time.
I'll hold it to it. I made good coffee.
I know. I always like.
Catch park, we can.
Yes, there we go.
I made a motion to accept the consent agenda. Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
I thought we moved on.
Uh, do we, to back up just a little.
I just wanna make sure.
Then we want to have, um, a small committee who talks about this and brings it back?
Yeah.
I think it.
I don't think we need a motion.
I think you and I are the committee. I thought, would you like to add somebody to our party?
I didn't know if we needed anybody from the community or stakeholders who wanted to be a part of.
I think not at this point, my, that's my feeling, is that we keep it within the board at this point. Because as we start to bring in stakeholders and stuff, that's kind of moving it out to the next level.
Yeah, I think you may need the input of some administrators at some point.
Yeah. And, and it would be good as you're, as you're making your board reports, that you just look at the strategic plan and just be aware that it exists, so that.
They'll be like, yes, reference to page number three, paragraph four, color coded green.
No, we're gonna have a secret code instead.
That's fine.
All right, so, does that make sense?
I'm happy if everybody else.
All right, are we all happy? Everybody happy, say amen.
I still make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Okay.
As written.
All right.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor of accepting the consent agenda?
Aye.
All right.
I hope you have an awesome trip.
I hope, I think it's gonna be great.
Take a lot of pictures soon, next slide.
I don't know, my daughter went on a really rainy one one time, and they had a riot. Oh, it was, she's, she's, um, it was a long time ago. She's, she's thirty, thirty-three? Rebecca, Maggie's, Maggie's thirty.
Okay.
All right, I was thirty-three. All right. Let's see, where are we, oh, committee reports, all right.
No changes.
I did a, um. I had a nice first meeting with the people from River Valley. We're off to a good start. So that was that. Any other committees? Let's see, information, um, you wanna talk a little bit about the budget timeline? Just, it was included in the packet. Yeah, can you?
Okay, yeah, I really like that timeline, so whoever put it together, I appreciate.
Okay, great.
You put it together?
No, but I said.
Oh.
Your comment.
Oh, I love it, like, I'm like, very, it's very nice.
Yeah, see if I could stick to it.
Well.
Well.
It's better than.
I'm like, we're on, I checked and we're on time at the moment.
Better than last year with six of us going.
What? And I, I think we're trying to, which we couldn't accomplish this year, but we were able to move it a little bit, start moving it a little bit earlier. But just given everything, we couldn't necessarily do that this year as much as we'd like. But I think it's, you know, the administrative team did a wonderful job putting this together and figuring out what we can meet, but we have met our deadlines so far and banking that we're going to keep doing that.
Next one's Friday.
That's right. And, and I know that the administrators are working in their buildings and getting stuff in, so.
Did you make this final?
Oh, Misty put it together, but we all worked together to put the dates there.
Oh, I didn't know if you were in charge of it, then I would really watch it.
Thanks, Shelley. So I just had a quick question, on this December 16th, is that the day that we would need to have Warren Articles in for, or the Articles Agreement, if we wanted to make a change for, be able to vote on, or is that a different day? That's going to come fast.
You know, I'm gonna have to defer to Misty, even though she's not here. But we do have a deadline to meet to get it in for printing.
Yeah, I almost want to say it's December 16th.
Yeah, it comes up really fast all the time, so.
Right before, so twelve, and it says something about, would you draft Warren Article?
Right. So, I mean, you can, I think it's, it's January, then, we can get it in, yeah, the finalize is January. But again, we like to have everything together if we can ahead of time for the budget hearing, which we can do. But I'd have to look at the SB two out on the website to see what their, their deadlines were this year, but it's usually in January. Certain time for petition Warren Articles and for us to finish.
There is information in, there's information in the information packet for Gordon, Gordon Graham Articles of Agreement discussion for the 23rd, so you already have that for the 23rd, to read through that for what Gordon Graham is talking about for that. It's, it's in the packet.
Oh, you found it, SB two, so it's January 10th, it's the last day to post notice for the 17th for the budget hearing, so we'd have to have it in by January 10th. Right, at the latest.
I mean, you can do a petition one, but that's the same day.
Yeah, the petition one's the same days, so. But I mean, at that point, you guys should have your Warren Articles together, you should know what they're gonna be.
Well, that's, I mean, we've got two meetings for Articles of Agreement, so we'll need, at the second one, we'll need to come up with what we want for a Warren Article to fit with this.
We also have to, be mindful, how many, also have to be mindful of how many articles you're putting on the warrant. Is remember, once you get to a certain point, people people are done saying that.
Talk about the Articles of Agreement, I don't see anything in the packet.
Yeah, I don't see anything in the packet either, I'll have to check, oh, it says, oh, it says included in packet for the first three things, but it says 923 for that second, for the bottom one, so. Yeah, so it's not, it's not, those will be getting, will be coming to you, yes, but we'll try to get those to you as soon as we can, so, just so that you can read through them as soon as you can. Because it's good to be able to see that. So, okay. We do. All right, we have a any other questions on the information stuff?
Yes, a question on the budget timeline and with the budget committee, are the, when you say here budget presented, is that a budget committee number that's presented to the school board, is that an administration budget number that's presented to the school board?
It's, it's going to be the administration coming to you, this is strictly our.
So, is there, is the school board gonna look at two different budget proposals, I believe?
Yeah, this is where, I mean, okay, I've, I've.
That's what happens, isn't it?
Well, it, yeah, I've spoken to some people about how it's functioning in other districts and when I've dealt with it in other districts. And when we dealt with it prior to this, Andy, is we built the budget, we'd go to the budget or go to the budget committee with that budget and then they would go through it. And then they would come back and determine if they wanted to make cuts or whatever they wanted to do and vote on it, but when it's presented on the MS, is it 27? Yes, 27, see the 26, 27, you're gonna see a school board line, you're gonna see a budget committee line, but the only one that's gonna be on the warrant will be the budget committees. So, um, but at this point, the budget committee is putting together their budget. Again, that's between you guys and the budget committee, I don't know how you guys want to work that out.
So, sorry, Mary.
That's okay.
So, the budget, as far as we know, so I haven't spoken to anybody on the budget committee, they're putting together their own budget.
It is, it is the budget committee's budget.
Right. Had they talked to anybody in the administration, is the administration going to, are they asking to speak to anybody from the administration?
Brendan and I have been present and they have reached out to me to start looking at certain departments, yes. Yeah, but you guys still need to build your budget.
No, I'm just trying to figure out where they're coming from, but I'll talk to Jamie a little bit more to.
Yeah, um, but, you know, they've been really good, they've sat down, they're trying to do, they're really trying to drill into things and look at it, and I think it's great they're getting a head start. But you guys also need to do your part so that you can kind of come together and, again, you know it's the budget committee's budget, but I think it would be good if everybody could work together on that.
Sarah, if I make a motion going to non-public, do I have to read this whole paragraph?
The treasurer's report is what's going around, right? Yes.
You got questions, right?
No, no, I, I.
I did get my question.
Okay, yes.
Right, right after the non-public, if possible, we have to have a non-meeting, which Mary and Andy would be leading regarding negotiations.
We can't, that's not a non-public issue, negotiations?
It's generally a non-meeting.
Okay.
Well, it's the same thing, it's not.
You don't have to post it at all, you don't have to do anything, you just say.
But it's open to the public? And non-meeting is not open to the public, okay.
You are, you go to, no, non-public is for something else, it's for an MOA.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
Okay.
So Sarah, do you need me to read this paragraph? If not, I will make a motion, if I do, somebody else stands.
All right, so, we are going to go into non-public for consideration of a school board for reasons of RSA 9185K 95A, which is, if discussed in public would likely benefit a party or party whose interests are, are adverse to those of the general public or the school district. It is considering a contract including any meeting between the school boards or committees thereof involved in negotiations. A contract negotiated by the school board shall be made public prior to its consideration for approval by the school district, together with the minutes of all meetings held in, in non-public session. Any proposals or records related to the contract and any proposals involving a school district that did not become a part of the contract shall be made public. Approval, approval of a contract by a school district shall occur only at a meeting open to the public at least or after which the public has had an opportunity to participate.
Oh, it's a low.
Hear a motion?
I motion it.
Okay, go here a second. All right. Um, roll call. Shelley?
Yep, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
And I say yes, we go into non-public at 7:38.